Clerk of Colville.
President.
President.
Alvin Donahue.
Present.
Here.
President.
Here.
Mia.
Present.
Moore.
Here.
Rector.
Here.
Motion to suspend with the reading of the minutes from the December fifteenth meeting and place them on file. Motion, may I refer to? Second. Order clear. All in favor by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Any vote. Carry. Motion to suspend with the reading of the City Treasurer's Office as of December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen and place it on file. Motion. Second. Mike O'Hara. So more. All in favor by signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carry. List of bills are on your desk. May I have a motion or a second to pay the bills?
The vote?
Tip. Tip notes. Vote, poll vote.
President Distefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Hadad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Communications. There are no new communications from last week. Can I get a motion and a second to place these communications on file? Alexis? Mike? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carry. At this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Sutmyer to give a presentation to us regarding the project at the middle school.
Thank you, Ms. Sutmyer. Superintendent of the Hudson City School District, I want to thank President Distefano and members of the City Council for inviting us here tonight to talk about our Vision 2020 capital project. As it specifically relates to what you're interested in, I'm sure in the intermediate school addition that is adjacent to city-owned property. So first, let me just say that this project really is a K-12 Vision 2020 to improve our academic standing. Our school district has been very challenged with report cards that we really want to make sure that we are improving the educational quality for our students and the experience that they have on each of our campuses. Hopefully, you have seen our latest report card that our high school has received adequate yearly progress. We have turned red X's into green check marks, so that's a good thing. And most notably, our graduation rate has increased from fifty-nine percent to seventy-seven percent district-wide. So that's really a big accomplishment, but we say unequivocally, we still have a lot of challenges. We know that each cohort, each class of students is going to present unique challenges, but we know that we can do it and we're going to keep up the progressive work that we've been doing to improve the Hudson City School District for all of our students. Besides academically, it's a sound financial decision to undergo a capital project at this time. We have retiring debt and we would like to take advantage of the window of opportunity to capture that and pretty much borrow money at a low rate and really have a big benefit for our students across all of the campuses. So in short, what it entails is a gradual grade-level reorganization. So in this two thousand and sixteen-seventeen school year, we are looking to roll up grade six that is currently housed in the intermediate school up to the junior high school where there is ample room to have grade six, seven, and eight learning together, where students aren't either coming or going, coming into seventh grade and leaving in eighth grade, but actually having established a sense of belonging in a school. That would free up space at the intermediate school, so we would undergo substantial renovations to be ready for seven-year-old students, students that have an appropriate learning environment in the intermediate school that are only in grade two. So then, in the two thousand and seventeen-eighteen school year, that building would house grades two through five. The long-range plan is to build onto the intermediate school on the south side, so that's as you're looking at the building from Harry Howard Avenue to the right going towards Crosswinds, and that's about eighteen thousand square feet that we are anticipating needing to move up pre-K through one as early as the nineteen-twenty school year or in the twenty-twenty-one school year, depending on how the project progresses. So the long-range plan is to reduce our district and right-size it due to declining enrollment, that it's not just a Hudson City School District issue, but across New York State, there's declining enrollment, and we want to right-size our district and take advantage of the space that is open in our buildings and become a two-campus district by the year two thousand and twenty. So that's it in a very quick nutshell, because in the interest of time, I would like to really answer questions that you may have as it relates to the city-owned property that is directly adjacent to the construction that we are proposing. We don't need the property in order to go forward with our project, but acquiring part of that or all of that city-owned property, however we negotiate it, would definitely enhance our project. It would be less costly because we wouldn't necessarily have to go up with a second floor, so we may be able to expand horizontally a little bit further instead of using a second floor for our vision. So we do want to talk to the city about how we might be able to do that, whether that's with a utility easement or if that's with acquiring the property. And we also know that Mr. O'Connor has brought to our attention an erosion issue that we were not aware of, but after organizing a site visit with key people, we really see that there is a problem that is currently on city-owned property. We can't fix what is on city-owned property, but if the school district were to acquire that property, we are interested in improving what is there, not just keeping the status close. So I would really like to open it up for information from the council and any questions that you may have. Mr. Friedman?
Doctor, thanks for taking the time to come out this evening.
My pleasure.
If the city were to transfer that property that right now has been eroded, would the district commit to remediate it?
Yes, and I just want to make sure that I can introduce some people that are here today, because it's not just my word, but it's also the word of the Board of Education and others with me here tonight, what our plans are. So to my right is Maria McLaughlin, President of our Board of Education, and two board members, Sage Carter and Caryotti. Also with me is the Superintendent of Buildings and Grounds, George Keeler, Jeff Boudreaux, who is a civil engineer with Weston and Sampson, and all the way over to the right, we have John Sharkey from Ryan Beck Architecture, and also an attorney, Ginger Benedict, that is with us, also representing the school district. So any questions that you may have, I've got numerous people. Oh, and Samaya! Shabazz, I'm sorry. See, come in and sit on the other side.
But that's a yes?
That's a yes. From all of us that are here tonight.
I appreciate it.
Yes. Any other questions or concerns? I did put a newsletter that will be going out to all taxpayers this week in front of each council member, and there's also a pile there for any people in the community that would like to take one as well, but they will also be coming to you in the mail to give you as much information as we can. Just this evening, we launched a video on our website so that you can learn more about the project, and it's a visual that can help you to understand what the 2020 vision is across the district as well. Any other questions? Mr. Hadad?
Yes, I assume that since it's come this far, that you probably have some sort of architectural plan or some sort of visual mock-up of the rendering of what it could be or what your options or ideas might be?
Yes, we have a very preliminary draft, because each draft that we ask for costs the district money, and until we know that the taxpayers approve this project, we really don't want to go through unnecessary drafts and revisions. However, we have an idea of the footprint and to make sure that what currently is housed at the John L. Edwards School would comfortably and appropriately fit into the footprint that we are proposing. So that's as far as we have gotten so far with the plans.
So a follow-up question, would there be, after the taxpayers have decided, would they be allowed to see this plan?
Absolutely.
So no one's allowed to see the plan until?
Actually, I think we have this evening, if you want to see a preliminary. There's also an athletic field also, sure.
Yeah, just some idea.
Absolutely.
It's a big bag, I left it in the lobby.
Yeah. In fact, he has five renditions, five copies of the same rendition that we currently have that will be put on easels in each one of our main offices of all of our buildings, so we'll share it with you here tonight. It'll be in all of our main offices in every one of our buildings as of tomorrow, and then they are going to move to the polling stations, there's five polling stations, so as people come in to vote, they'll be able to look at what we are proposing for the athletic field as well as the buildings.
Basically, again, as the superintendent mentioned, is a very preliminary plan, just to get an idea of massing and spaces we might want to need. The front of the building is right here from Harry Howard Avenue. That's the main front of the building. The shaded area here is where the addition would go. So right now, we're showing the addition here and a two-story addition in the back over the old technology wing that was actually designed for a second-story addition, so that could be done there. The shaded areas here are for major renovation, the yellow, and then minor renovation, the building is the light green, but the brownish area is where the addition would potentially be. The building's a beautiful building, so we would, if there was some opportunity for the district to get the land, we would like to push this addition back and over so that it's not impeding on the front of that building, that would be the ideal thing, but right now, the way the building's designed or preliminary designed, it does fit on the property, and that's what we have to do until we know what's going to happen in the future.
So you require the additional land to do a setback or make it, because you hit it, it's a beautiful building, it's one of the most elegant buildings in the city of Hudson.
Yes.
And to have new construction right immediately to the south of that would really take away from that.
Right, yeah, our intent would be to be back at least ten, twenty feet from the front of this building and have a real low-profile addition that would spread out a little bit more.
Is there a preliminary elevation?
No, not at this point.
I'd like to see what that would look like.
Yeah, I mean, as we go through the process, the design, if the land comes about or other opportunities, the design is going to change quite a bit, and as we go along, we do different elevations and massing, but at this point right now, as the superintendent said, it's before the voters vote on it, so it doesn't make sense to go through that process. It promises you to be a lot of different designing options.
Sure.
We think this is a perfect opportunity for the school district and the city to work collaboratively towards improving what our students currently experience, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
I'm Jonathan Lerner, I'm the Chair of the Conservation Advisory Council, and I live at three forty-six Union Street. As I understand it, the piece of city-owned property that the school district would like to acquire is upstream of where the current stormwater pipe outflow into the ravine is. Is that right?
Yes.
The outflow is not on the piece of property that the district wants to acquire. It's, the pipe takes water from the storm, from school district property into city-owned land downhill. And if the city and the school district arrange for the school district to acquire this piece of property that you're looking at, the outflow will still be beyond that on city-owned land. It's not, it doesn't flow out on the piece of property that you want to acquire. Am I right about that?
It could. The piece of property that is in discussion, that's been proposed, has not been defined yet. It could, and in fact, the actual size of what would be necessary is not defined yet. It kind of depends on a lot of options and a lot of alternatives, and there have been discussions that perhaps the property transfer could include part of the outfall, which would allow district funds to be expended to improve it, because right now, central school districts and city school districts by law have difficulty spending money off of property that they either own or have direct control over.
Well, I don't, I'm not familiar with philosophy, I would just like to say that that stormwater pipe might have been state-of-the-art in nineteen thirty when the original building was built, but certainly by the time the recent addition was made, engineers and architects were much more conscious of how to handle stormwater, and it seems to me that the fact it still is flowing and creating an erosion problem is a result of negligence on the part of the school district and that, however it gets worked out legally and in terms of property transfer, I would consider that the school district has an obligation to remediate that erosion downstream.
Yes, for Dr. Sutmyer. Twenty million dollar expenditure, what is the academic impact to the students of Hudson? Is there any?
Oh, yes.
One, roughly?
Well, most of that project is going towards the academic reorganization of the school district. The athletic field is really just a small portion of the twenty million dollars, but the whole vision is reorganizing our schools, less transitions. We're only one of fifty-seven small city school districts in New York State, which gives us a special designation, but also the spending formula, the formula that we get from the state is really not in harmony with the challenges that we have in the district. So one of the things that we're looking to improve our district with is less transition, less disruption to our students moving from one school to another. So to go from three transitions from John L. Edwards to the intermediate school and then to the junior, senior high campus, it would reduce it to only two transitions, going from the elementary building, which will house pre-K through five, then to the seven, excuse me, through the six-through-twelve building. So that's one of the academic components that is an improvement to the system that we currently are managing. Also, to align our curriculum and make sure that our programs, our teachers can talk with each other, six-through-eight. The Common Core learning standards, however you may feel about them, are here to stay in some format, and it's imperative that we start to align our curriculum in harmony with that, because our six-through-eight is banded. So it's important for teachers to get students ready for secondary-level education, but it's really hard to do that when there's a disjointedness between the sixth grade in one building and the seven-through-eight being departmentalized in another building.
So adjacency amongst teachers' curriculum and having, I guess, one step less in moving, changing schools, but there's no increase in any programs for academics, but there's an increase in athletics. So this will get back to the whole idea of academic development.
But I think we're doing both. I mean, we need to make sure that we're producing well-rounded students, and some of our students only come to school because they can participate in sports or the arts. I mean, that's all important as well, so we're trying to really broaden the spectrum of what our students' experiences are, and academics is at the forefront of everything that we're doing. But we also, while we're doing this, we can also provide them with a state-of-the-art field that our students can feel the pride of practicing and having meets on their own campus instead of being transported to other districts. But you're right, everything is about aligning the curriculum, having teachers have professional development to improve our programs, to make sure that we're taking care of our students that need intervention services, as well as our students that need to be challenged with enriching services. So it's really a broad vision of what we're trying to do in the district through a capital project such as this.
I will reiterate what John said, I am thrilled you're here tonight. I'd like to see more of this between the schools.
Unfortunately, our board meetings are Monday evenings, so we were thrilled when you had a meeting on a Tuesday and that we were invited, that a number of us could come, so thank you. Thank you.
Well, Rick, I come to these issues with, I think, with the same filter that you do, and I spent an awful lot of my life in academic institutions, and I prize academic attainment, obviously, somebody who's pursued it into my thirties. But the other hand, I think what the superintendent's saying is very important, and I am in the school one day a week, for at least a couple of hours every week, and a lot of the students who go aren't necessarily interested in becoming engineers or mathematicians or computer scientists, and that's really where everything is pushing them, and anything that we do that can show them that there are other paths to success, I think, is really important, particularly for students who don't prize or don't find the academic route interesting or easy for them. And the other side of that is, and it's in the newsletter that we saw here, and I also learned this from talking to Dan and Mary, who are very helpful in understanding this issue, is that a lot of the students who go to that school feel, the condition of the school is a reflection of our community's importance that we put on the students, and when the school isn't up to snuff, and we're one of only two schools that don't have a track that can be used for intramural sports, the students feel that we don't care. And I think that that's, I never, this is something I learned, every year you do this job, you learn something, and this is something I've learned, and I think it's important, and I think making sure that the students here in the Hudson City School District have good facilities is very important to their academic and their overall development.
Totally agree, I just, you know, my question was about balance.
I don't disagree.
And I've also found out that it will have a new soccer field in the middle of this, which is fantastic news.
And I also want to say that even though we are very proud of our graduation rate, we know that we have really improved it, it's not just about graduating students. We are really looking at graduating students that are college, career, and life-ready, and that means something different for each student, but we need to make sure that we're motivating our students, that they can come to school, and hook them of why it's important to come to school, and also show them the academic side. If they're motivated in sports, they come to school for sports, that's motivation, but we can also show them other things that they can have, you know, a fruitful life outside of our walls. So it's really about post-secondary education or going into their career of choice. So we really want to open up the pathways that our students can choose from, and this is just one way of helping us to right-size the district and focus on what's really important.
The students, when they participate in the after-school activities like sports and that, they really have to keep their grades up to maintain, they have to maintain a certain grade level to stay on that sport.
Right.
Plus, you see in the papers constantly, all of the students getting athletic scholarships, making them go, having them get that benefit and to move on farther.
We have an athletic code of conduct, which tells students that they have to have a certain grade level and they need to be in attendance in order to be able to stay on the team. So there is incentives for the students, so you're right, and whether it's athletics or being a part of the arts, it's really important that students have those experiences.
What would be, would it be in this athletic field, would that consist of a track and field as well?
Yeah, it's a four-hundred-meter track.
So right now, the school doesn't have a track team, so that would...
We have a track team, but we have to transport them to another school district in order to practice and go to meets. We have a cinder track right now that's not usable, it's not safe for our students. So inside of that, we would have a football-soccer field, and also, we would have shot put and all of the others, so that we could have a patrune meet at our school as well. And I believe we might have that with us as well? If you want to give a map of the, if you wanted to have another visual of what we're looking at? We just happened to have another one with us. This will also be available in the main offices and going to the polling booths.
Again, it's very preliminary, just to give you an idea of the size of the track. And I promise you, it won't be this color.
That's nice.
That's the back of the school, if you come down this way, the track will be here along the back. It would be the track here, we could have pole vault, triple jump, shot put, discus. We're right now showing bleachers on this side here and a press box there, so it'll be parking, it'll be handicap access back to the fields.
Will football be played there?
Yes, football, soccer. Oh, yeah.
You know, this is a win-win for the community as well. What a beautiful view from that track for the community to be able to exercise and use a piece of our district so that everybody can enjoy it and benefit from this facility.
Union Street. And my question relates more to the longer-term aspects of the school district's capital plans, specifically the possible sale of the J.L. Edwards School, a publicly-funded building. The size and central location of the school make it potentially extremely valuable community asset, and one obvious use for it would be affordable housing. My concerns that the city and community have some control over how such a significant public property might be repurposed, and I'd like to know what kind of input the city would have into what becomes of it.
Well, certainly, as we go down to a two-campus district, we are interested in either leasing or selling the John L. Edwards School. It's not part of the capital project right now, but obviously, that's what the forward plan would be. You know, again, we're wanting to work collaboratively, we want to listen to the community. I'm sure there's a lot of purposes that that district building can be used for that could benefit the city, whether it's city offices or it's affordable housing, that's up to the people that are interested in the property and also to the city and what we're looking forward to.
As a publicly-funded building, is there any requirement for a referendum such as the one next month? Is there actually any sort of?
Oh, yes, yes. So for example, the referendum that we're having on February ninth, where the public will decide whether they're in favor of this capital project or not, we also have the sale of the Claverick Building. We own a school building in Claverick that will be up for sale. We cannot sell a school building without taxpayer approval, so there's two propositions on the referendum. The first one is the sale of the Claverick Building, and the second one is the Vision 2020 Capital Project. So if John L. Edwards were to be sold, we can accept a purchase offer, but the taxpayers would ultimately decide on whether we would sell that property. It would have to go to referendum vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why don't we, it will be ready to sell?
Why, isn't it what?
When?
When would we be ready to sell John L. Edwards Building? We wouldn't be able to move all of the students out of that building and into the intermediate school until the nineteen-twenty school year at the earliest, and depending on construction and unforeseen things that you might come across when you're constructing, we also have to look that it could possibly be September of two thousand and twenty at the latest. We're not going to move students mid-year, so it's September nineteen, nineteen or September twenty.
Don't you also have your tenants in that building?
We do, we do, we have Columbia Opportunities leasing some rooms at the John L. Edwards School. We have two Head Start programs there, and we also have a family literacy program that is housed at John L. Edwards.
Are any of those long-term leases, or are they one, two years?
No, they're one or two years. You know, would we like them to continue to be within our school district? Yes, if we can find the space, but I don't know that the school district can actually build space for another organization, but certainly, if we have room available, we would allow them to continue to lease.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with the administration.
Move on to our first resolution of the evening, appointing commissioners of these.
President Distefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Garica.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera. Number two, authorizing a transfer of funds to cover unanticipated vacation sellback for personnel in the City Kirk's office for the fiscal year 2015. Roll call vote.
President Destapano. Aye.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Okay. Yes.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Number three, authorizing, amending the 2016 budget to accurately distinguish between IDA and city credit revenues and disbursements. The city treasurer is here this evening, if she'd like to give us a quick explanation of this evolution.
Yeah, if you'd like to.
Okay. May I have an introduction in a second, please? Henry. Rick. Roll call vote, please.
President Destapano. Aye.
Alderman Donahue. Friedman.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Number four, authorizing transfer of funds between retirement accounts for fiscal year 2015. May I have an introduction in a second? Tiffany. Priscilla. Roll call vote.
President Destapano. Aye.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Number five, authorizing 2016 by department petty cash funds. May I have an introduction in a second, please? Lauren. Roll call vote, please.
President Destapano. Aye.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Number six, authorizing transfer within fire department accounts for the fiscal year 2015. May I have an introduction in a second? Henry. Roll call vote.
President Destapano. Aye.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Number seven, authorizing transfer of funds within the police department accounts for fiscal year 2015. May I have an introduction in a second? Henry. Priscilla. Roll call vote.
Can I have a question, please? Okay, maybe I didn't understand, but move on. I see that Resolution 7 and A, utility gasoline, that's both from the political, is it a different account or different thing? So utilities and gas, gasoline, the 7 and 8, and from 31, 200, Farquhar and B.
It's coming from that account to...
Two different items.
Two different resolutions.
I'm sorry.
Taking a look at what I do, so it's mentioning Resolution 7 and 8. They both come in from gas and utilities.
Is that because the gas is so expensive? Yeah, but I can put it on one, that's why I was thinking. It's possible, but I don't know.
What is the question?
Question is, Resolution 7 and Resolution A, I'm asking the question, utilities and gasoline, it's two different, the same, it's police department gasoline, you can put it in one account. It will be one account or a different account or what?
It's the same source of the funds to be transferred to different places, and it just happens to have a surplus sufficient to meet both needs.
Roll call vote, please. President Destapano.
Aye.
Alderman Donahue. Friedman.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Yeah. Yeah, aye.
Keith. Keith. Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Resolution number eight, transfer of funds to the police department accounts to meet payroll requirements for the fiscal year 2015. May I have an introduction in a second? Henry. Alexis. Roll call vote, please.
President Destapano. Aye.
Alderman Donahue. Friedman.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Resolution number nine, authorizing the transfer of funds to the legal account for the fiscal year 2015. May I have an introduction in a second? Rick. Tiffany. Roll call vote, please.
President Destapano. Aye.
Alderman Donahue. Friedman.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Resolution number 10, authorizing transfers of funds within the public works department accounts for fiscal year 2015. May I have an introduction in a second? Tiffany. Roll call vote, please.
President Destapano. Aye.
Alderman Donahue.
Aye.
Friedman.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Can you do business?
Maybe a commendation for our police department for their swift work at that horrible accident we had last week?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Very grateful for their continued service.
And the family also.
Yes.
Mr. Scolera.
Rick Scolera, Michael Kors, Hudson. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Alderman Friedman's words, if I can stay together myself with a cold I got, and appreciate those words and agree with them totally. The problem I'm having is that I talk to a lot of people, and this is the best-kept secret in all of the city of Hudson, and you have three weeks to go before this referendum. You don't have a second chance. So as elected officials, if you agree with this referendum, even if you disagree, but whatever it is, you have a responsibility to meet with your constituents, to get your constituents aware of what's happening on February the 9th, and to let them know that their vote is very important. So I would just ask you, please, I mean, it's that important, I think, to the city of Hudson, and I think it's important to certainly our students. Appreciate it.
I have a question, Mr. Maria. With this meeting that's taking place on the 9th, is there flyers printed out that are going out mail to the students or their parents?
That newsletter is going out to all taxpayers, because we, our website is full of information. We're on Facebook and Twitter and getting the word out as much as we can as a school district, but we do appreciate your help. I do want to say on Monday, January 25th, from 4:00 to 8:00 at the John L. Edwards School, we have open voter registration, so if you know of people that need to register to become voters, they can do that at John L. Edwards School on January 25th from 4:00 to 8:00. And a community conversations, we have a community conversation tomorrow night at John L. Edwards from 6:00 to 7:00. Again, the following Wednesday...
June 20, January 25th?
January 25th, John L. Edwards is the open voter registration. But every Wednesday before the vote, so tomorrow evening, January 20th, then Wednesday, January 27th, and then Wednesday, February 3rd, we're having open community conversations where people can learn more about the capital project at John L. Edwards School beginning at 6:00.
This video will be on Mid-Hudson Cablevision this Friday at 7:00 p.m. and succeeding Fridays.
Glad to have you back.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Tiffany.
All in favor?